All right, the time is 7:00 PM. Time for our Thursday, February 8th, 2024 council meeting. We'll start with a call to order. And first up this evening for our opening prayer, we have Mr. Andy Alberts from Talmadge Lutheran Church.
It's always good to be with you. I'd like to start tonight just with a short scripture reading. This is from Romans, Chapter 13, where it says, "Every person should place themselves under the authority of the government. There isn't any authority unless it comes from God, and the authorities that are there have been put in place by God." And then jumping down to verse 7, "So pay everyone what you owe them. Pay the taxes you owe. Pay the duties you are charged. Give respect to those you should respect and honor those you should honor. Do not be in debt to anyone except to the obligation to love each other." Let us pray. Gracious God, Heavenly Father, thank you for government. Thank you for the city council of Talmadge. We pray, oh Lord, for all of the leaders and for mayor. And we ask, Lord, for your wisdom and your spirit of discernment to be with them. Guide the decisions that they make, that they may help protect and keep order in our community. We also thank you for all the people that do keep us safe, for the police officers and the firefighters, for those who teach, all the teachers and all the employees of the city. We ask, oh Lord, that you continue to allow them to do their duty to the best of their ability, that together we may live in peace and prosperity, loving one another. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Next up, we have our Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a fifth grader, Carson Atkins, from Talmadge Elementary, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Here.
Adam Bozick.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Here.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
Nick Rubino.
Here.
Thank you. And for those of you watching at home, we do have a new council member. Mr. Nicholas Rubino was appointed as our new at-large. And a lot of new faces this year, so we're looking forward to a good year. So moving on, we have correcting and adopting the previous meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes from 110 to 2024, and regular meeting minutes from 125, 2024. So moved. All right, we have a motion.
Just a second.
And a second. Yes, sir.
Point of order, can I make a motion in a second for both?
You can do that as long as there's not an issue with needing to bifurcate them.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second for adopting the meeting minutes. Any discussion? Nope. Madam Clerk.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozick.
Yes. Thank you. All right, moving on to our financial reports. We have the fire and EMS fund transfer in the amount of 2,000, sorry, 255,000. Our street maintenance and repair fund transfer in the amount of 255,000. And our police fund, or our police pension fund transfer in the amount of 87,500 from the general fund to council on 1/31/2024. We have the appropriation report, fund report, and revenue report for the period ending 1/31/2024 to council on 2/6/2024. January financials report to council on 2/6/2024. Talmadge Recreation Center profit and loss report for the period ending in 1/31/24 to council on 2/6/24. The income tax comparison for the period ending 1/31/24 to council on 2/6/24. Consolidated investment portfolio for the period ending 1/31/24 to council on 2/6/24. The income tax by source report for the month of January to council on 2/6/24. And the revenue comparisons for major funds for the period ending 1/31/24 to council on 2/6/24. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, make a motion to accept the financial reports as submitted.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
And that's seven zero. Moving on to our public hearings portion, we do have one public hearing this evening, so I will turn it over to Councilman Bolus.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Going to be calling the Personnel Committee to order for our public hearing this evening. It is 7:06 PM. We have public hearing for Ordinance 2024-15 tracked. This is establishing the number of non-collective bargaining employees by department and position pursuant to RC 731.08 and providing for immediate enactment. Just additional information on this, this was, this is at third reading tonight and at our public hearing. It was approved at Civil Service Commission, and this ordinance, again, is changing the position of the Administrative Assistant for the Road Department from a classified to an unclassified position. It does not change pay bands or anything else of that nature. The city is ready to advertise for this position and would ask for adoption this evening. So with that said, I would like to call, is there anyone in the audience for or against I say for a second time, is there anyone in the audience either for or against Ordinance All right, and the third and final time, call, is anyone for or against Ordinance 2024-15? All right, and with that, I would ask for a motion and a second and any discussion on Ordinance 2024-15. I always forget that part. I will close the public hearing at 7:08 PM, and now we will proceed.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 2024-15 tracked. Any additional comments or discussion from council or administration on this?
Councilmember Bolus.
Yes.
I will be abstaining from voting this evening in this particular position because of a possible familiar relationship of a candidate, so.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Clerk, please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 2024-15 tracked.
Okay, Adam Bozick.
Epstein.
Ordinance 2024-15 tracked passes by a vote of six to one abstention. All right, and with that said, any other matters to come before Personnel Committee on this ordinance? All right, thank you. I'll close committee.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item seven, community input. At this point, we will turn it over to anyone in the audience for a time period of two minutes if they have anything to bring before council that is not related to any ordinances that are currently under the agenda at this time. Do we have anybody from the audience? No? All right. Moving on to item eight, agenda additions. We currently have none. Anyone on council or administration have any additional additions to you add? It's like a triple negative. All right, moving on to item nine, reports of the administrative officers. We have Mayor, which is currently not here this evening, but we do have Ms. Jill Stritch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really don't have anything to report this evening. We are going through some transitioning, hiring some staff, preparing to do some other items, which is in regards to the ordinance that has been requested to have just the first reading tonight, not adoption. But Mayor Kilway is at a family function, and she will be in tomorrow morning, so feel free to come in if you have any needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything under Director of Administration that you'd like to report?
No report, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item C, Director of Public Service, Mr. Mike Rohr.
Good evening. I would like to request ordinances 2024-28 and 2024-29 be passed at first reading. For the month of January in zoning, we had 33 total permits issued for the month. It was a pretty busy month, actually. And then code violations, there was 27 open violations, and seven of which were property disrepair. And at the end of the day, that's pretty good considering as big as the city as we got, that there was only seven. And the cemetery, there was eight total burials for the month, seven full, two remains, 367 grave spaces, and 149 columbarium niches are still available. For the parks and rec, you can see the numbers there, the number, membership at the rec was just a little over 8,000. The visits were 25,856, unique visits was at 3,199. The rec center will be celebrating 20 years on February 14th. There is no school day camp, February 16th and 19th. Family Fun Night is March 1st. Winter Wonderland Dance is March 2nd. And the Midwest Wheelchair Tournament is March 2nd as well. In the parks, the new shelter at Lyons Park, that's a picture of it there. It's 85% complete. The only thing that remains is the concrete floor, and hopefully that is done sometime here when it dries out. The Howe Road Park renovations are ongoing, and they have a scheduled date of May 31st for completion. Maccapool memberships go on sale to residents February 15th and non-residents March 15th. We are increasing the number of passes being sold this year to 2,250. Last year it was 2,000. Remember, we can only allow 880 people in that pool at one time, and based on staffing, that number probably never gets reached because we don't have enough staffing to make it safe. So we're doing a couple of things there that are different than we did last year. The street department, believe it or not, we had quite a bit of snow and ice. I mean, control, early part of January, I know lately it hasn't seemed like it, but we had those ice days there. So guys did a nice job on that. We've been street sweeping. We removed four tons of street debris with that. We did 125 feet of lineal ditching. We removed the lockers at the police station in the locker room. They were getting new lockers over there. We painted the offices at the John Western Service Center, and the streetlight inventory is complete. So what does the night crew do when there's not snow and ice? That's what they do. They do projects like that, so. Moving on, the utility department, we had two main breaks in the month, Newton and Beechwood. We had quite a comparison. We had seven main breaks in December, so a little bit of difference. Seventeen water breaks we average a year. We did 15,000 lineal feet of sanitary sewer televised, and 15,000 lineal feet was cleaned. Normally, those numbers don't match, but we decided to clean every one that we televised because it needed it. The annual testing of the city-owned backflow system was completed. And what I want you guys to look at, I don't know if you can see that picture real well, but Ordinance 2024-29 is for an EPA grant to get a utility locator wand. The one where you have now can only find the utility, hook it up to the one that this grant allows you to get for $10,000. It will help you find every line that's there that has either a tracer tape to it or is metal. So if you look in that picture there, you can see the electric, which is the red arrow, the two greens are sanitary sewer, the yellows are gas. So as you can imagine, that utility wand would come in great use, especially its safety, right? And that's a grant, and we can go into more discussion when we get there. We did have a water disturbance on Tuesday, and that was due to a battery failure during a test. We test weekly, so normally we don't think anything about it, but it was actually a good test. We were able to get the water back on in 15 minutes, and it showed the weakness in that battery, so it was actually a good test. Moving on, last time I brought up that we did score two grants for resurfacing, and I said it would happen next year. I was off. It's not going to happen until 2028. So I just wanted to make sure that was a clarification there. And that ends my report, unless there's any questions.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Not getting that grant till 2028, does that set our project back significantly?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. I do have one question related to the backflows. I know that we had recently discussed a new requirement for the backflows to be installed, like if there was pools, things of those natures. How is that going so far?
Slow. So we've put out inserts into the bills, letting people know. We've done a survey that you do online. We're meeting the EPA requirement. That is not a new requirement, actually. I think that goes back to 2007. We were just kind of, was kind of not, we were probably slow in getting some of those done because it's unbelievable what you need a backflow for. Like you said, a swimming pool above ground or in-ground, hot tubs, jacuzzis, irrigation systems. If you have a water well and city water, you need a backflow, so it's quite a bit. But we are underway, and we are meeting the EPA requirement right now.
Okay, great. Good news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, Director of Finance.
Thank you. Everyone should have received the January financial reports. The year is going well. It's early. One month doesn't give you much data to deal with, but everything is going well. We're just in the process, in my office, of preparing for our annual audit, and if anybody has any questions on the financial reports, I'll be glad to answer them.
It did look like our income tax was doing pretty well for first month.
It is, but I always hesitate in any, with one month of data to make any assumptions because a lot of income tax fluctuation can be timing differences from year to year. So I always hesitate. I think I even said that in my report. Not that I don't see anything making any significant trends at this point, but it's always nice to start off the year in a positive direction.
Great. Thank you. Director of Law.
Thank you. I have no report this evening.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to the reports of standing committees of council as a whole. Up first, we have our Planning and Zoning Committee with Councilwoman Mary Gutman.
Thank you. I will call Planning and Zoning to order, and we have no legislation before us this evening. Does anyone have anything for Planning and Zoning?
I had a question.
Yes, Mr. Bolus.
I was unable to attend the zoning meeting when the application was reviewed on the McDonald's location. Was there any update on that that anyone heard of?
It was, Councilman, it was given a year extension.
Okay. And was there any other development in terms of the project, in terms of that location moving forward, physically moving forward into the lot in front of it? Because the land was going to be donated to the city by the trail?
I think all that's still a go, but nothing yet.
Okay. I didn't know if that was discussed as a part of the application.
No, I don't think anything's changed. They're just asking for an extension for a year.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And that was actually, all I was going to add was that that extension was granted. My understanding was just it was a matter of getting everything together so that the owner could do it as quickly as possible once they started the project.
That's correct. It's amazing, the supply chain. I mean, there are still issues out there. We're waiting months for some things, just for a simple HVAC unit. I mean, it's crazy right now. It's actually upsetting at times that you got to wait this long.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the applicant did also indicate that there's some technical legal issues still with some of the property transfer issues, so that's still ongoing.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, I'll close Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, Finance, we have Councilman Donald Pavlik.
Yes. I call the Finance Committee to order. The Finance Committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investments, expenditures. We currently have one first reading tonight, and that first reading is Ordinance 2024-30, authorizing the mayor to contract with Insight Advisory Group, LLC, for the economic development consulting services without competitive bidding. Appropriate the necessary funds and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Mayor Kilway. This ordinance was read in the record. Mayor's not here tonight, but Ms. Stritch, do you have any comments? I know you mentioned it earlier.
The mayor is just asking for a first reading but not adopted tonight.
Councilmembers, have any comments? Okay. With that, I will close the Finance Committee meeting. Thank you. All right, thank you. Moving on to item C, Personnel, Councilman Jonathan Bolus.
Thank you. I call the Personnel Committee to order. We are all present this evening. We have no legislation. Does anyone on council or administration have anything for Personnel Committee? All right.
I have one question.
Yes.
Have we begun the negotiations with our unions?
We have not yet. We'll be doing that this year, though.
Okay.
Right, right.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anyone else on council, anything? All right, I'll close Personnel Committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item D, Safety, we have Councilman Nicholas Rubino.
Thank you. I call the Safety Committee to order. The Safety Committee deals with disaster services, communications, fire, and paramedics, police, and health. We have no current legislation before us. Does anybody have anything, any questions for Safety Committee? All right, I will close Safety Committee.
Thank you. You got off easy for first go.
It was a little too easy.
Moving on to item E, Community Issues, we have Councilman Ted Roy.
I'd like to open up Community Issues to order. Community Issues Committee deals with parks and recreation, civil affairs, and liaison between council and the Recreation Board, and intergovernmental affairs. At this time, we have none. Does anybody have anything to add? Then I'll go ahead and close Community Issues since we have no legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. As you close that, I did have one question for Mr. Rohr. I didn't know if we, did we utilize the all-text message system that we have through the city when we had a water, the water, no water available?
No, because we didn't know it. And by the time we would have got a message out, we had it back up.
Okay.
So that was at 15, I mean, by the time we knew what happened, we had it running again, so.
Got it. Good job. Thank you. Moving on to item F, we have our Public Service Committee with Councilwoman Jessica Epstein.
Thank you. I call Public Service Committee to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highways, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements, water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy resources, recycle, waste, and trash. This evening, we have Ordinance 2024-28 at first reading, authorizing the Director of Transportation to replace signs on State Route 261 within the city of Talmadge and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Mayor Kilway. The ordinance has been read into the record. I know Mayor Kilway is not here this evening. Mr. Rohr, would you like to speak to this at all?
Yes. So the state's coming through and is replacing and upgrading all the signs on their state routes, and they're just asking, we have no cost in this at all. They're just asking for us to allow them to come in and do that, and there would be no reason why we wouldn't.
Is there any, is the traffic going to be impeded at any time when they're replacing it?
It shouldn't.
Okay. It's just replacing existing signs, not adding anything new?
No, upgrading signs per the state code, so.
And you are looking for first reading adoption, is that correct?
It would be nice, yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second. All right, thank you. Is there any additional discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Rohr. Does the Department of Transportation, does the installation of these, or does the city?
They do.
They do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. What's the timeline as far as when those would be replaced?
I'm guessing summer. I don't think there was a time. They want to do it this year, but I don't believe they actually gave us a timeline.
Okay.
Yes, it just gives them authority that they can come in all year and do that.
Okay.
It's actually kind of housekeeping, didn't get on the, with the rest of them, so it authorizes them to be able to come and go whenever they need to throughout the year.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes. All right, Ordinance Number 2024-28 has passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Also at first reading is Ordinance 2024-29, authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept, if awarded, the Ohio EPA Division of Drinking and Groundwater Grant Program, DDAGW, and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Director of Public Service. I know I had some questions that you kindly answered earlier, but do you want to speak to this ordinance?
Yes, thank you. So this is an EPA grant being offered. It's 100% reimbursable, so we would have no percentage in here. And it's for that utility locating wand to find the utilities out there. It's a great system. It's much better than the ones we have now, and like the picture shows, it's a tool that will come in hand many times, so.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion from council?
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Rohr. So you mentioned this is a tool, correct, that we're getting a grant to be able to purchase? Is there certifications that our crews have to go through to operate it? No?
They'll have a.
A training period?
A training, yep.
Okay.
But that's it.
Great, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozick.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
All right, Ordinance Number 2024-29 has passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before committee this evening? Hearing none, I close committee. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 11, Reports of Special Committees. Mr. Bolus, I believe you have something?
Yeah, just a quick update. Received an update from our IT department that the council chambers, equipment upgrade, the various audio video equipment has been ordered, should be arriving in the next couple of weeks. If you didn't notice, there's been some electrical work already been performed. If you didn't notice, there's been some electrical work already been performed in preparation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for heading up all those improvements, so. All right, moving on to item 12, Announcements. There will be a Richardson Trust Fund Trustees Meeting immediately following this meeting, and we will just continue our live stream while we do that, so. Moving on to
A German.
Item 13.
I have one additional announcement, if I may?
Oh, yes.
I, I did bring it up last meeting, but just in case there's any new streamers out there, we are having, President Bozick and I are having an event, Hearts for Heroes, this Saturday at the library, will be making cards and writing letters to troops currently deployed overseas. So just a reminder that that event is taking place this Saturday from 11 to 1.
Thank you for that reminder.
I, I have one.
Mr. Pavlik?
I was not on council last year, and there's an individual up here who is going to be retiring, and I know she didn't want me to say anything, but I'm going to anyways. Is she shaking her head? Yes. Ms. Strich, thank you. Thank you. I, I've known you for about 15 years, and we had some fun on the Talmadge Grow, CIC, so thank you for your service and what you did to the city, so that's all I have to add.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlik.
Thank you. You didn't steal my thunder, but I was going to bring that up. So, thank you, Jill, for, yes, your years of service, many years of service, and again, I've had the unique opportunity to work with you as a councilman and as an employee of the city, and I just want to thank you for your guidance and many, many years of guidance along the way, and I just appreciate everything you do for, for the city, everything you've done for the city, so thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you.
All right, moving on to item 13, do I hear a motion for German?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas?
Yes.
All right, thank you, the time is 7:32, and we are adjourned.